Head, lay a force, one right in, alone.
I'd like to call the order of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for March the 11th. And the first item on the agenda is the invocation by Vice Chairman Larry Yoder and after that will be Pledge of Allegiance led by Judy Moose, so if you please stand.
Let's pray. Our kind and most gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity you've given us to be in this great land and this great nation. Lord, we would ask for you to protect our military personnel at home and abroad, be with the leaders of our country, our state, and our local government. Help all those leaders, Lord, that they would make the decisions that need to be made with your guidance. Lord, we'd ask that you'd be with those who are sick and afflicted and be with all of our, I can't stress enough, be with our military personnel. For we ask this in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners report. Does any Commissioner have any comments they would like to make? No comments? If no comments, the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
Slow move.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the regular meeting, which is public comment period. And I wanted to say that we've established some procedures that we're not going to implement this meeting, nor the next meeting, but the following meeting after that. And to have more structure around public comment time. And I'm going to read what those new procedures are. It's an opportunity, what public comment is meant to be is for us to listen to the public as far as what concerns and issues you have, but not get into a discussion or debate about the issues. It's only for us to listen. Public comment total time is fifteen minutes. So we're going to allow each person during that fifteen minute period to have three minutes. So that would mean five people can sign up for a public comment period. There's three minutes per speaker. And if there's a room, if, for example, if there's ten people that want to talk about the same topic or make comments about the same topic, they should select a spokesperson to speak for them. So it's not going to be, you know, ten people speaking, it'll be one person speaking. And direct the comments to us, the board, not to individuals on the board or individuals in the audience. And when you approach the podium, it's not on the slide that you see behind me, but state your name and what you are going to comment about. And be civil and courteous. And that would go for all of us, quite frankly. And these new rules and regulations, we've devised these not to stifle public comment, but just to put some structure around public comment time. The last thing is, and this is important, not this meeting, not the next meeting, and I'm going to look at my calendar, if you just bear with me just a second, tell me, I'll tell you when the next meeting is. The next meeting is... It looks like April the 8th is our next meeting. So this meeting and the next meeting will go by the old rules. You don't have to sign up. But the next meeting after that will be May the 16th, excuse me, May 13th. We will adopt these new rules as the official guidelines for public comment. And the key thing I was going to mention is that you must be signed up to speak. And the person you call to sign up, if you sign up, if you're the first person to sign up or the second person, third person, fourth person, fifth person, then you will be on the agenda to speak. And the person you call is Jamie Starnes, the clerk to the board, and her telephone number is 632-9332. And you'll get our receptionist and just have them transfer you to Jamie and she will put your name on the list. So obviously, the first person that signs up will be the first person to speak. So I just wanted to clarify what our new rules, but we thought we would have a test drive, a break-in period for the next couple of meetings before we actually implement these regulations. Again, just want to reemphasize that it's not to stifle anything, it's just to put more structure in the public comment time.
And Mr. Chairman, I think we've been instructed and advised by our county attorney that we needed to adopt these procedures after attending a school government meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I see that she just walked into the room and sitting in the back of the room, but yes. Because counties, not necessarily Alexander County, but other counties were having a lot of issues during the public comment period. And she attended a continuing education class. Larissa Ertman is our attorney, and she advised us to come up with these procedures at which we would, which we have done, and we're going to, if it works out and it works for the public, then this is what we're going to adopt. And we are going to adopt them unless we find that we have missed something that we didn't anticipate. But Mr. Commissioner Mayberry, you are correct. We did this on the advice of one of our county attorneys. The next item on the agenda is the Alexander County Department of Social Services monitoring reports.
Did anybody sign up for public comment?
Yes, excuse me. Yes, we did. Pardon me.
You're stifling public comment.
I was already stifling before we even started. We have three people signed up. I have one name marked through. Is that correct? Gary Sane is the first person to sign up. So approach the podium, state your name.
I'm Gary Sane, and what I'd like to speak about is a cycling event we're going to bring to Alexander County in the fall. Our son Brian, who was a 2007 graduate of Alexander Central High School and then of NC State University in 2011, has been a very active bicycle racer over the past six years. And he really plans to have a career in cycling. Brian runs a cycling team. It's called the Hillsborough Street Elite, which is based in the Raleigh area. The team consists of men and women, and they compete in road, criterion, and cyclocross racing. They have secured a race date of Saturday, October the 5th, 2013, with the North Carolina Cyclocross Series, and would like to stage this race in Alexander County if they can find a suitable venue. Now cyclocross is the fastest growing segment of bicycle racing. These events are held during the fall and winter seasons. It is an off-the-road race and can be staged in a public park, on a school campus, on private land. One recent race we attended was adjacent to the Statesville Airport. The race course is typically about 1.5 miles, and it consists of hills, open stretches, woods, barriers they actually have to dismount and jump over, switchbacks, and mazes. An area of four to five acres with adequate parking and areas for race officials and food vendors is needed for this event to take place. The event will attract from two to 400 people, and this is racers and spectators. The race participants are men and women with their ages ranging from young children to older adults. During the race day, there can be as many as 15 events held, and the skill levels will range from the beginners to professional racers. And we have, in this part of western North Carolina, several national champion racers that live in the communities. This area of western North Carolina has a very large and active cycling community. Currently, there are several major events held in the surrounding counties. The Bridge to Bridge from downtown Lenora to the top of Grandfather Mountain, which is 100 miles, Brett's Ride in Hickory, the Ride Across to Wilkes County, and the 24 Hours of Booty held in Charlotte. Holding events like these can attract visitors to our area and have a positive impact on the local businesses. Our family has been very active in cycling, and we actually take part in several of these events. Now certainly, I would not do the Bridge to Bridge, but we've taken part in the 24 Hours of Booty and Brett's Ride. And both these organizations have raised millions of dollars for cancer research. The cycling community is also involved in promoting safe cycling, youth participation, and development of bike lanes and greenways. Alexander County would benefit from hosting events as this and working to grow our cycling infrastructure. I want to read an excerpt from the Rails to Trails Conservancy, an organization whose mission is to build a nationwide network of trails to link communities together and promote healthier lifestyles. Also, I have a copy of the full document from Rails to Trails, if anyone would like to have a copy. This was published in 2007. Trails build strong, economically vital communities. Trails, according to the National Association of Home Builders Studies cited by the New York Times, are the number-one amenity potential homeowner site when they are looking at moving into a new community. Trails provide communities with a valuable amenity that translates into increased housing values. In Indianapolis, for example, the increased property value of trails was more than $140 million. Trails revitalize neighborhoods. In Minneapolis, the Midtown Greenway has spurred development of new housing and businesses to take advantage of the desirable location adjacent to the trail. Trails build local businesses, bicycle tourists, a growing affluent segment of the tourist market contributes significantly to the local businesses that are well-connected to trails. Along the Virginia Creeper in southwest Virginia, visitors spend $1.59 million annually, providing an estimated 20 new full-time jobs. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. The next person to sign up is Bud Kaywood.
Thank you. I'm Bud Kaywood. I am the chairman for Citizens for the Future of Alexander County. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. French, Ms. Starnes, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Back in November of last year, CFAC presented to you a plan of four initiatives of a vision for the future. One of those was to create a cultural arts environment in our county. Alexander County is blessed with some of the finest artists in the southeast, including visual artists, sculptors, photographers, musicians, actors, playwrights, and writers. We know this because we've had the opportunity, especially at the Bethlehem Library, to have a series of artists hang their work there since 2010. And just to share this with you, we've got the library booked through mid-2015. So we know we've got the artists in the county. Alexander County is the only county in the Unifor area without an Arts Council, and furthermore, the only county in the surrounding 26 counties that does not have an Arts Council. We need to promote and showcase our local talent. Most artists, including myself, are very involved in the activities of our neighboring counties because they have venues and regular opportunities for exhibitions. CFAC strongly believes that a community without a plan to develop and foster the cultural arts is not a progressive community. With that said, what I want to share with you is very important. On Tuesday, March 26th, the Hidden Knight Center in Lucas Mansion will present Visioning for the Future, a brainstorming session led by Robert Donan, Community and Economic Development Consultant, and LeAnn Wilder, Art and Communities Director for North Carolina Arts Council. A number of citizens specifically selected, including artists, have been invited to present ideas and experience to set a course for our future. CFAC has worked in collaboration with the North Carolina Arts Council to help make this brainstorming session possible. We strongly support the self-expression of any and every art form in our communities. We urge this commission to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person and last person signed up is Mac McColl.
Thank you. My name is Mac McColl, and I am the treasurer of the organization that Bud just referred to, Citizens for the Future of Alexander County. And we essentially are an advocacy group for what we believe would be improvements in the economic and cultural climate of Alexander County. And on March 19th, there will be, and the polls will be open for a special election, and that'll be a referendum which will determine if alcohol sales will be allowed throughout the entire county rather than just in the city limits of Taylorsville. And those that have been following this issue may be aware that our organization, Citizens for the Future of Alexander County, is strongly behind the passage of this referendum. But I'm not here tonight to really talk about the specific benefits of that referendum, rather, I'm here to publicly thank all of you here on this commission. The reason is simple. You did the right thing when you voted to call for this referendum. Up until this point, the residents of this county have never had an opportunity, at least in the 26 years I've been here, to decide this issue for themselves. No commission prior to this one has had the wisdom and the foresight to let, to say to the people, you know what? This is your county, it's your decision. You need to make this decision. So this commission recognized that we have a society that is designed, that was designed to allow us, we the people, to determine for ourselves how to govern ourselves and to decide how we want to live. So all we asked was that you give us that opportunity to decide for ourselves. You did that, and all I wanted to say is you did the right thing, and you deserve our thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mac. After I got ahead of myself, I will get to Ms. Cindy Holman, who is the Director of the Alexander County Department of Social Services, and she's going to talk about the DSS monitoring reports.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come. As we talk about these monitring, when I was thinking about this today, I remember my mom used to always say to me, "The really tough thing about humility is that you don't get to brag about it." But my grandpa used to say, "It ain't bragging if you can back it up." So I've come this evening to brag a little bit, and I hope you'll indulge us. The agency has experienced some really positive monitoring results since November of last year. And you have a pretty little packet, I think, that we prepared for you, each of you. I think it's a green. But I want to tell you about one that's not in there because we don't have our results back yet officially. I've called several times prior to this meeting trying to get them and have reminded them that I hope they'll take into consideration their timeliness the next time they're coming to look at us for timeliness. But that was a community alternatives program, CAPDA and CAP choice monitoring, that happened in November of last year. And they showed up on site. This was a Medicaid review, pulled three cases randomly. We had no forewarning, and we had no errors cited. So I wanted to tell you about that one because I wanted to brag on the adult services folks for that. The first one that's actually in your packet, you see the January 10th letter. We received a list of cases, and in order to adequately portray this monitoring, I have another little piece of paper I would like to give you, and I'll just pass them to you. This is a list of our child welfare staff as you get it. Wait till they're across there so you can look at it. I promise I'm not going to talk about why folks are leaving us and going to surrounding counties. That's a discussion for another day, but I wanted you to see this. The colors, red is for our workers. This is our child welfare staff. Our red workers are new workers of less than two years. Our yellow workers are two to five years, and our green workers are staff that have more than five years of experience. So you see how new this child welfare staff is. The other thing is you'll see under some of the names on the actual form, two times, four times. That tells you how many times that position has rolled over in the last couple of years. And I show you that tonight only just to say, when you look at this January the 10th letter and you see that we had five 4E foster care cases pulled, the three, if you go to the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th row down, you'll see red across, all the way across. Those are our three foster care workers. So they're all brand new. And I think it speaks to the management staff's capability because we had a monitoring of our 4E foster care, and we had no error cases. And that's pretty big stuff. That's federal funding, and it's the best source of funding that we have for foster care. So I just wanted to brag on them, to tell you that in addition to having a lot of new workers, when I came here in January of 2011, we had 29 kids in care. We today have 52 kids in care. And I hope you won't immediately say, "Well, that's because of you." It's because of substance abuse. It's because of domestic violence. It's because of mental health issues in our community. And I just looked, I don't know if any of you have gotten the North Carolina Child Health Report card. It just got to me today. But it showed this prescription drug issue, and I'm going to share that with LeAnn because she's always real interested, that we have 20% more kids. From 2007 to 2011, we've had an increase of 20% more kids in grades nine through 12 who are using prescription medications without a prescription. That's one in five in Alexander County. So you know the kinds of cases that we're working with. We have more children in custody. So I just wanted to say that a great monitoring report is a really big thing when you have a lot of new staff and you have a lot of cases to work. If you look at the next letter, February the 14th, that just confirms that we, as a state, North Carolina, we passed our data reliability audit for child support. And that actual audit, we depend on that in order for North Carolina to receive incentive monies. And we use, here in Alexander County, incentive monies to help fund one of our positions. So we did pass that audit. We actually, there's an audit each year, and we actually have a case pulled right now from Alexander County for this year's audit for that. So that's a positive thing. And then the last letter is dated February the 15th, and that is a, with regard to a DMA, Division of Medical Assistance came on site, and they pulled 65 cases. Well, actually, we boxed up our cases and sent them to them. And they reviewed them with a fine-tooth comb, and we came out with no corrective action plan. If you look through this, you'll see 100% over and over again. On the last page, we did have a processing issue, and that looks like, because it's two categories, it looks like four cases, but it's the same two cases. Because we had excluded time, then we also had a processing error on those same cases. So out of 65 cases pulled for Medicaid, we only had two errors. We did not have a program improvement plan. We did not have any corrective action plan. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention. In addition to my grandfather, one of my board members who shall remain unnamed, Darrell, said, "You really need to bring this to the commissioners and let them know how good a job the staff are doing." And so I applaud them. I appreciate your letting us come forward and letting you know what good results we're having. It's a tough time. All of our caseloads are high. Folks in our county are having a hard time. There's a lot of need, and our staff are doing a great job. So I hope you'll join me in congratulating them, and I appreciate you letting me come and talk about it. Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment, because, Mr. Chairman, Cindy did a very good job presenting this information. But when you look at the chart and the child services, these individuals don't work an eight-to-five day. They work as the needs come up, and as they have to vary their schedule to meet the child, to meet the parents, to meet guardians, whatever. And it's surprising to me how many hours a week these individuals put in and the time. I know over Mother's Day weekend, they worked around the clock for about four days with a child because there was not a facility available in North Carolina to take that child at that time. And when these come up, they're numbers, and yes, that child needs help. But one of the big factors we have in North Carolina is, and it applies to the adults also, but we don't have the capabilities and the facilities to handle a lot of the special needs that come up for DSS and Health Department. And you were humble in your bragging. I'll give you an A for that. But I did want Cindy to come because the commissioners need to know, and the citizens of Alexander County need to know, that our DSS staff puts in a tremendous amount of time. And it's not because it's their job, it's because they care about the individuals they're taking care of, whether it's children or adults. And I want to thank you, but I also want to especially thank the staff for the job they do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. I'd want to say too, Cindy, it's not only because of your leadership, but when you look at the chart, and I just wish we could, I don't know if we can get it on camera. Can you see this on camera? With the amount of service that these people have, and as Mr. Robertson, Chairman, Commissioner Robertson said, the job that they're doing with the lack of years of service, plus the good reports you got or excellent reports you got, it indicates that y'all are doing a fantastic job with the resources that you have. And so your staff and yourself need to be complimented to a high degree on the job that y'all are doing. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
You gave out two numbers a little while ago, 29 children in 2011, 52 now. And it can be tracked in Alexander County, both with children and with seniors, that during the downturn in this economy, the number of people that are needing help, kids and seniors, the number of people that are needing help has increased, and those numbers are kind of indicative. We're looking at about twice the caseload we were four or five years ago.
That is correct.
And one other thing you mentioned too, and I happened to pick up on it in an article. I can't remember if I read it in the Times or where I read it. One of the scourges that we're having in this county is prescription drug, whether it's usage or whether it's selling, and that's a tremendous problem in the school system in this county. Is that not correct?
It is.
So that makes the job of these people even more difficult because kids can get prescription drugs from their parents' medicine chest, take them to school, take them or use them or trade them or whatever. And that's a big, big problem that you're having to cope with.
Very difficult to prove.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, now, to add a little bit on that part though, the Health Department, in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department, they have been setting up collection sites several times in order to collect these extra medications. And the one thing that needs to happen is parents need to understand, you know, if you don't need, don't need to take the six of the pills, then dispose of the other ones properly. And that doesn't mean flush and it's gone because it gets in our water system and it does funny things, and that causes contamination also. But I know that, being on the Health Board, I do know that the Sheriff's Department and the Health Department... the Health Department have worked hand in hand and they've received a grant or two in order to do this. And it's a good time to do it and I know that they'll probably be doing this in the near future again also. So I think it takes a total county and the, you know, the entire community working together to make sure that these things happen. But the one thing that, you know, that has to be stressed is that parents and, not only parents but all of us, no matter who we are, we have got to dispose of these drugs properly. Because we think nobody will get a hold of them. But we've had two robberies here recently at our local drugstore and all they wanted was the good stuff. And when I'm talking about the good stuff, I'm talking about the things that make you high. So, you know, we, we've got to stress the importance of folks disposing of these things properly. I think one of the laws that they're in place of having, to have ID, to get the proper medication that you need, has, has helped some. And I hope in the near future that we can continue to bring that down by law enforcement and the Health Department and doing some things to the community to educate and to dispose of properly. And another thing that's got to happen is our medical people have also got to be educated, not to give, but only enough that that person absolutely needs. Instead of giving the full 20 pills or whatever, cut them back or something, you know. And when they prescribe them to these people, and that's me not putting anybody down. It's just that I, I, I think that it's a total education process for all of us. Because for years, we never thought about that. The only thing we worried about was marijuana and meth and things of those natures. But I think we're now finding exactly what your stats are saying there, that these prescribed medications are doing a lot more danger than any other drug that I can think of this particular time. Even though they have knocked down a few meth labs here lately, which is very good. But the, the prescription drug is, and it's not only talked here, I will tell you this, that, and speaking with some commissioners last week in a meeting that I was in, that this thing is, is a nationwide problem and it's a problem. And it's taken a lot of work on everybody to try to dispose of this situation. But I will commend you on the job you do. I know it's hard and I appreciate what Social Services does. And, you know, I always say, you know, that I, I'll never understand for the life of me why anybody ever want to hurt a child or hurt an elderly person. You know, man up and if you've got something to do, lead the kids and the older, older folks along, you know. But for some reason, they like to take it out on people that can't defend themselves. But I appreciate the job all of you do. You do a good job and I know it's long hours. But thank you and your staff.
Thank you so much. And I do, if you'll just tolerate one more minute, I do want to give a shout out to our Food Nutrition Services staff also. Because I could be wrong, but I have not received a call, I don't believe from any of you, about complaints from our community about the new automated FNS system in CFAS. And I'm sure you've heard a lot about, about this new system in North Carolina. But in our, in some of our surrounding counties, they're as much as a month to a month and a half behind on processing. And I will tell you that if you go by our agency at 6:30, 7 o'clock, you'll see cars there. And it's our FNS staff getting those benefits out to our community. They are doing everything that they can to make sure that we don't have people in our community going hungry and not getting their benefits on their card. It's a complicated system, lots of little quirks, imagine that. But we're working through it and we do see that in the long run, it will be beneficial to us. That system will eventually screen multiple programs instead of just one. And the Food Nutrition's just the first to come on, onto that program. So hopefully we'll do lots of work with the system and, and get it in better shape for those multiple program screenings. But right now, our staff are really getting it done. And I mean, it's a day by day thing. Matt Reese just said to me before I left this afternoon, he said, "I had one worker that needed five cases to get completed because their benefits need to go on the card on the 13th." So, I mean, that's how close we are. But we have not yet. And I say that, as soon as I say that, we'll, we'll have something happen. But we're doing, they are doing everything that they can. They're working some very long hours. So just wanted to say congratulations to those people too. They've not passed a monitoring, so to speak, and that's why I'm up here. But they are doing a great job. So thank you so much. I appreciate you letting me come.
Thanks again for.
One, one last comment before Cindy sits down. In her remark, she mentioned there was information in here she was going to get over to Leanne Whiston at the Health Department. And Leanne was here not too long ago because the Health Department had got excellent ratings. And we wanted the DSS Department to receive the recognition they're due. But one thing I think is very important here in Alexander County is our two departments work well together. If a situation comes up, they pick up the phone, let the other know. It's not a matter of going up the chain and down the chain and hanging on a few limbs both ways. So DSS and the Health Department here in Alexander County work very well together. We appreciate that.
Absolutely. Words well spoken. That is very, very true.
We have great working relationship and I appreciate Leanne very much.
Cindy, I just wanted to say again, thanks for your presentation. Thanks for you and your staff on the fantastic job you're doing with the resources that you have. And I wanted to make one other comment as to what Commissioner Yoder was saying. And I want to address this to the parents and guardians of school age children that may be listening or watching out there. And Larry said something that's very important. Go to your medicine cabinet and check to see what prescriptions you have. And if you're still using them, monitor them. Make sure that the number of pills that you have, that you haven't used yet are still there, number one. And if you're through taking a prescription, make sure that you dispose of those prescriptions properly. And so that's something that people could do, start doing tonight to make sure that we control from the family level, these prescription drugs. So I just wanted to say that. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? The next item on the agenda is the Alexander County Law Enforcement Center and Detention Center Final Change Order Project Closeout. And it's going to be County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have the information in your packet. You have the final change order for our law enforcement and detention project. The final change order is $40,158. The total change order and final pay request total 147,654.14. That's right in line what, per the budget for the project. There had also been $9,291, which were design corrections, basically reimbursing Alexander County from the architect, Hemp Hill Randall Associates. We also have, the last page in your information is total project information, financial information. The total construction cost, the total cost paid to contractor Bordeaux Construction to build the facility was $7,923,714. We paid Hemp Hill Randall during that phase $200,231. The third party inspections, we paid Blue Ridge SME and Palmetto $89,487. We had IT conduit and fiber work at the facility, $108,927. The construction of the drive, which has been a great addition, the engineering, the grading and the paving, costs $56,324. Phone system, $23,492. Attorney fees, bond counsel, insurance, $51,892. And the miscellaneous things, signage, surveying, site lighting and other things, $19,930. Those items total $8,473,997. That does not include the furniture and shelving that was purchased through the budget process, which was $76,078. And total change orders for the site, total $550,283. That's a different number than what you have, but it's $550,283. So we've come a long ways with the facility. And if you recall, back in April, actually on April the 8th, 2011, we had our dedication. So almost two years ago, we started this, the process of building the new law enforcement detention center. And today it's completed. So at this time, I'd like to request approval of this change order and final pay, pay request. I'd also like to thank two people that go pretty much, well, three people actually, that have done a lot of work behind the scenes, that are on the county staff. Russell Green, Greg Kronk and Lynn T. You know, special thanks should go to all of them for all their hard work. It's been a tough project for everyone and we're glad we're, this part is behind us.
Do I hear any comments from any of the commissioners about what Mr. French just said?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Well, I have a question before we vote. Is this the final?
That's it.
This is it? There will be nothing else?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. And the jails completed? There's nothing else to add to it?
Yes.
You know, you just put the kiss of death on there.
I mean, there's still going to be little things that'll happen and I'm sure that they'll, you know, the sheriff and all of them, they, they start operating the facility, they might find something that.
Well, yeah, but from the contractor.
It's like moving in a new house, so.
Yeah.
But from the contractor and the, and the architect, that would be.
Right. Yes, sir. That's correct.
But I mean, there'll still be little things, I'm sure, that they'll need from here till.
And Mr. Chairman, there, and Ryan has led to it. In the summary that Rick went through, some of the items were not included in the original contract or in the scope of the original contract, for instance, and we're aware of it. The entry drive and the construction of it, that was not there, the phone system. There were things that were owner responsibility that are on this summary sheet that are not a part of the contract with Bordeaux or Hemp Hill or outside sources.
That's correct. Any other comments or discussion?
As I listen to this, Mr. Chairman, I just wish that we could have spent some of all these big dollars on something like Cindy's program instead of spending all this money on people that will not do what they're supposed to do. And most of them, or a lot of them, even cause Cindy's problems.
You're talking about the people that end up in the jail.
That end up in the jail. Well, maybe I said that wrong, but what I'm saying is, in my mind, it's a shame we've spent this much money on a jail and we have no money to spend on the children who are being victimized by these people. Sounds like it's upside down to me.
Any other comments? I have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous? Next item on the agenda is a resolution for bond order authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds for Bethlehem Water District in the maximum amount of $875,000. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I think we've reported on this earlier. This bond order is in front of you tonight and we would recommend approval. What this is, is basically refinancing this. The current, the old rate is 3.97. The new rate would be 1.91%. It would have, the effect would have a net savings of $41,000 in interest. It would still be paid off at the same time, which would be April of 2018. But of course, it'd be a savings and we would recommend approval, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do I have any questions, any comments?
Do we need to read this?
No.
Okay. Very good. I just want to make sure. Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? Have a first and second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion to approve is unanimous. The next item on the agenda is resolution approving amendment to existing financing agreements to reduce the interest rates payable by the county. And County Manager Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. What this resolution will do will lower the interest rates and provide significant savings for construction of school improvements. First, in Ellendale, the Ellendale project, and then second to the West, East Sugarloaf and Stony Point. That's the way these projects were grouped. The Ellendale project was financed at 4.97%. The new interest rate will be 2.59%. And close out on March 20, 2021, it's the same timeframe, but the savings will be $332,000. The, the combination of projects, which is West, East, Sugarloaf and Stony Point, the interest rate when that project started was 4.05%. The new interest rate will be 1.73%. And it'll close out on September 2017 with a savings of $66,000. So almost $400,000 in savings for school projects and for school improvements, which, those are great interest rates. Again, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you have about this. And we, and we don't need to read resolution unless somebody wants to. But pretty much this is what we reported on earlier to you.
Rick, the dates, Ellendale closes in '21.
Yes, sir.
And the four projects in '17.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion, resolution is approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is resolution approving Alexander County Water District PWS 01, 02, 02, oh, Water Shortage Response Plan. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is the Alexander County Water Shortage Management Implementation Plan. This is required by the general statute and is intended to explain how we would respond to drought or other water related, water related emergencies. This is, the county plan follows the City of Hickory Water Shortage Management Plan. And the only difference basically is Alexander County has been inserted, inserted into this process. The, the plan has been reviewed and approved by Deaner. That should all make us feel a lot better. And we'd like to recommend approval at this time unless there's a question. There's a resolution included that, which needs to be approved.
Mr. French, does this, does this cover all the water districts in the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It covers just ours.
Ours. Okay. That's what I meant.
I'm saying.
Go ahead, Mr. French. I interrupted. Do you have anything?
No, I was just going to say the Bethlehem Water District and the Alexander County Water District. It does not cover the town title or, or Inter United.
Right.
And may I ask you a question, Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
This plan really evolved from the water shortage we had in the water transfer agreements that were made.
Yes, sir, years ago.
Years ago.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. French, on page 12, it talks about days of patrol. Who is going to patrol during drought and enforce this? And who's going to pay for those patrols?
City of Hickory will take care of that. That's part of their.
Part of the contract.
Part of the contract.
Part of the contract.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
One comment, just the fact that Deaner's approved, it worries me.
I could say a few things, but I agree with you.
Almost said it politely.
Yes, and I'll try to be polite too.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a first and second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous, approved? The next item on the agenda is the sales tax report. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have your sales tax report for the first six months of the fiscal year. The total sales tax collected in Alexander County was $1,787,897.28. That's right at 50%. It's 49.54%. That, that is running $39,483 more than this same time last year. In fiscal year 2012, that number was $1,748,414. So that's still about $39,500 and that's a 2.2% increase. And that's the good news, but as we have been reporting, we more than lose money on it because of the whole harmless. But as we have been reporting, we more than lose money on it because of the hold harmless set aside, and that's running sixty-two thousand, seventy-one dollars so far this year. But again, the sales tax numbers are running pretty close to budget.
So the, the sales tax numbers are about forty thousand dollars higher than they were last year, and we're still sixty thousand dollars in the hole?
No, it would be about twenty-two thousand dollars in the hole.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
When you're talking about the sixty-two thousand, we had some in the red there last year also, so it is an improvement, even though Article forty-two was robbery committed by the General Assembly. You gonna say anything, Commissioner Yoder?
No, the only thing I'd say is I had an interesting conversation with several commissioners from other counties last week in a meeting I was in, and I can tell you now, I spoke with two commissioners. And one of them, I asked him, I said, "Just gotta know," I said, "How much is your tax rate in your camp?" He said, "Eighty-seven cents." I said, "Do what?" He said, "It's eighty-seven cents on the hundred." I said, "How many people you have in your camp?" "Thirty-seven thousand." And you're getting ready to do what? He said, "They're getting ready to build a brand-new jail." And they just finished building a courthouse complex-
They did.
With, and everything with all their new offices and all this. And another gentleman standing there let me know right quick that they were paying eighty-two cents. And I felt like I was keen at the moment because I told him what our tax rate was and smiled and said, "Yes, we just finished building a new jail." And all of these folks, and the point of the entire conversation all boiled down to the fact that we were talking about the tax situation in North Carolina and how it affected the rural communities. And they're in the same situation we are in, talking about sales tax and from discussing point of origin to-
Per capita.
Per capita. And these folks, they have the same problem that we do. One of them is vice chairman of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. The other one is the chairman of the North Carolina Association of Commissioners. And, you know, trying to push through some way to redo the way taxes are distributed in North Carolina, they have the same complaint. They'd love to see it per capita, but based on the representation in Raleigh from large cities or from larger counties than we are, it's a very difficult, difficult highway. And I can say this, the next two presidents of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, both of them will be coming from rural communities. So I'm hoping within the next while, we'll see some type of changing the way taxes are distributed and maybe, and hopefully, looking at the the entire way that taxes are collected in North Carolina. So I hope that something will be done. I know that will be a push the next two years to get that done, and we'll see how it pans out.
As you go to one comment I'd like to make, too, is in comparison with their tax rates, our tax rate is quite much lower than their tax rate, sixty dot five percent if I'm correct.
Sixty-nine.
And so we're frugal with our tax dollars. Back to the comment that Commissioner Moose made, you know, I would rather spend eight and a half million dollars on social services than a new law enforcement center, but that's something that we needed. And hopefully, if we can get the law enforcement center filled up with inmates, we can pay for it, and actually completely filled up, we can make some money. And so the county could use the extra money for maybe some of the social services that you were alluding to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify one thing. The general statutes of North Carolina require the counties to provide jails. And Superior Court judges have the authority to take over the jail system if you don't have a jail that's up to state standards. And that is the reason we built the new jail, because a Superior Court judge explained to us the need for that facility. As far as DSS and Health Department programs, the bulk of the funding from those comes from the state, federal, to state, and into the counties. And those responsibilities are not handled. There are some portions that are handled through county taxes, but the programs are financed from Washington to Raleigh to Alexander County.
Yeah, and you were being kind in your words about the fact that we had to build a new jail. We were told to build a new jail. As I recall, I wasn't on the board then, but you were. You knew all the details.
We were required to give Superior Court Judge a schedule, and we maintained that schedule from the time we started planning until we occupied. With one little snag, we did ask for permission to hold up when we understood that there might be some federal funds available for shovel-ready projects, which we did try to get that, but we did comply with the schedule.
And I make the furthest question to Mr. French, and you may recall, the financing as opposed to building a jail when we did, as opposed to when we were, I'll use the word ordered to, we saved a significant amount of money, did we not, on the interest rate that we got when we built the jail? Do you recall what the difference was?
I don't recall what the difference was, but we got a great interest rate.
But it was a significant amount of money.
It was, yes, sir.
Any other comments? The next item on the agenda is board appointments and reappointments. And the first group of appointments is, would be Voluntary Farmland Preservation Program Board. To appoint Dustin Queen for, and Rick, excuse me, I think I'm getting ahead of myself. This is your item on the agenda, if you wanna talk about this.
That's okay. The, to appoint Dustin Queen, to reappoint Coy Reese Scott Sink, both of those are for four years. Equalization Review Board, reappoint Doug Ramsey, David Odom, Patsy Little, Linda Barnett, Bobby Norton, and Ron Roseman as the alternate. And those, that's a one-year term. And to the Library Board of Trustees, appoint Darren Connor for three years.
Any comments from the commissioners?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is the Budget Ordinance Amendment Number forty-four. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number forty-four is to increase the Board of Elections' budget for the Help America Vote Act grant, two thousand, two thousand twelve's second primary coding grant to be spent fiscal year two thirteen, twenty thirteen for election costs. To increase DSS budget for award of additional FEMA Phase Thirty grant funds for emergency assistance payments for rent, mortgage, and utilities. To increase the senior center budget for expected increase in revenue in collections for senior center activities. To budget for payment to Western PMAC Council of Governments for the Clean Water Management Trust Fund Regional Septic Tank Project. Project to increase the jail budget for estimated cost of contracted detention through March twenty thirteen. Previous budget estimates were based on an earlier opening date for the new detention center. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of County Manager?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I actually had a question. Sorry, I gotta move faster.
You can ask questions about motions, there's nothing wrong-
Okay.
Other than adjournment.
Mr. French, on the sixty-five thousand dollars for the contracted detention, what, what is that date, or what is that through?
Through March.
Through March?
Yes, sir.
So-
That's for Ash and Allegheny.
Okay.
That's running us about forty thousand a month. Total.
Excuse me, Mr. French, go ahead.
I said, it's total, that's total.
I was just gonna make a comment for folks that are listening, watching. That's, that's for jail inmates that we are having to house outside the county. That's the cost we have to pay Ash and Allegheny County for the housing of those inmates outside the county. Any other questions or discussion? You have a motion to approve in a second?
No, excuse me. I already have, I'm sorry.
All in favor of the Budget Order Amendments Number forty-four, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. The other County Managers' report is the next item on the agenda. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, some information concerning Medicaid and concerning a meeting that we attended with the North Carolina Caucus. But I'd like to mention the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, sort of the highlights for the legislative priorities in two thousand thirteen. And they are oppose the shift of state transportation responsibilities to counties. Of course, reinstate ADM and lottery funds for school construction, oppose unfunded mandates and shifts of state responsibilities to county. Ensure adequate mental health funding, preserve the existing local revenue base. And the other side has some hot topics, which are state budget, the motor vehicle property tax, inmate medical, non-emergency Medicaid transport, and tax reform, which is something that we discussed earlier. There's also some dates I wanna point out of some meetings. The Commissioners' Choice Awards is March twenty-first at six-thirty at Alexander Central High School. That's March twenty-first for the Commissioners' Choice Awards. In April, we have two local runs that are well-supported in the community. Robins Run, which is April the sixth, two thousand thirteen, it's Saturday, it's a five K run. It starts at Matheson Park, and the Alexander County Family YMCA has a running event on April twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. That's also on a Saturday, and it's a ten K and a five K, and it starts and finishes at our local YMCA. I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of County Manager?
Well, I have a question for the County Manager or Commissioner Yoder. I've not really seen much about the state transportation responsibilities, secondary road maintenance being passed on to the counties yet. Is there any talk of that being brought up again?
I have not heard any talk in association meetings with anyone that they're pushing this issue right now.
That's true.
It seems they're really quieting down, I think, and I don't think that you're going to see that happen.
Yeah, so-
I don't anticipate that happening. The one thing that is a major concern, as far as I'm concerned, from everything that I've been involved in there in Raleigh, is the, this Medicaid thing could possibly get ugly, don't you think, Mr. French? Based on the way they're cutting cost and, you know, that could get very interesting to see what would happen. Because the federal government, they're gonna pass some of this cost on to the states, and then we'll have to see what the states are going to do with it. One of the things that we really need to make sure and pay strict attention to, and I will tell you guys, if you get a response and you get something from the association that says that you need to make a phone call immediately, I suggest that you make that phone call immediately, especially if it concerns Medicaid, and you need to stay abreast of the situation. Because this could eventually, they're gonna find some way to pay for it, because, you know, the states in, in the red in Medicaid, they're in the red in unemployment insurance that they have back to their federal government. And there is no money to give to different programs. The governor has said that straight up, straight out, and made no bones about it, that there is absolutely no money available. There's no money in Washington and to go anywhere, and they've got to find some way to do these things. Now, the one thing I will tell you about this sequest, I have a hard time with the word, but it's a question, is that being involved in one of the meetings there, and I have an email that I'll share with all of you, I've got the information, and I think I did send it to Darrell, and I didn't have the rest of his email on my personal email account. But these problems that they're having with Medicaid and this question and all that. The thing about that is that some of this military funding that they were talking about also, that you need to know, is the fact that it's the money that was granted but is not being used. So therefore, they're going to eliminate that money, and you'll see those cut in the military, and that's where those cuts are coming in. Now, the one thing that was presented to us so that we'd all understand quite clearly is that no federal jobs will be cut for at least thirty days. Because you have to give federal government employees thirty-day notice before they can be laid off or their jobs may be terminated. You have to give that thirty-day notice. And they said that that may happen, but they didn't really anticipate it happening real largely. You see people responding right now and things happening. But I don't think that, I think, what my personal opinion is, and from what the other commissioners are saying, they feel like it's a, it's a, it's a political tactic to try to get everybody to come to the table to make a move on these things. But as of right now, until we get into probably the first of April, around April tenth, April fifteenth, that's when you'll probably see things happening. But I'm hoping that something will happen in Washington, these folks will come to the table and sit down and make some decisions that are best for the country and see what will happen. But that's one of the major things that there, that most of the people in the association were discussing what was going on. But-
I'd like to, if you're-
I'm finished.
I'd like to offer two figures that really stand out, that, you know, the counties are kind of waiting for the other shoe to drop. The things that Larry mentioned, Commissioner Yoder mentioned, is the state owes the federal government two billion dollars in Medicaid funding. The state owes the federal government two billion dollars in unemployment insurance money. So that's a total of four billion dollars that's gonna have to come from somewhere. So the counties, as Larry said, when we hear the all-hands-on-deck whistle from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, we've got to be ready to respond to that. Of course, we need to be able to tell the public that we need their assistance in contacting their representatives. And again, if you don't know who your representative is from Alexander County, Mark Hollow is your state representative, and Austin Alran is your senate representative from Alexander County. And those are the people that you need to contact as far as legislation is concerned. I've gotta mention this, though, that I find to the point of being ridiculous. I mean, there is a lot of issues and a lot of problems with sequestration and ramifications of it. But the first thing the president did was close the White House to tours. And the people that are tour guides at the White House are volunteers. They don't get paid one red cent. So I think it was ludicrous to do that. It's the people's house, and here, the only people that were hurt were the kids, school kids, that were gonna tour the White House, that weren't able to tour the White House. So I just had to make that comment. I thought it was absolutely ridiculous to do that. Some of the other commissioners may have some comments there.
Yeah, I'm sitting here gritting my teeth. The problem in Washington and Raleigh both is they forget that middle America exists, and they need to make their presentation so they can be understood rather than putting out the garbage they're putting out. I have read one article that actually made sense, as far as the dollars the federal government's talking about. Since two thousand seven, the federal budget has gone up, I believe it's twenty-three percent, if I remember the night, twenty-three percent from two thousand seven till now. The money they're talking about cutting, eighty-five billion dollars, amounts to about a three percent cut of that budget. I also read last year that the average income of middle America was reduced about three percent because of the economy. What they're proposing to do is no more than average Americans have had to do because of the status of the economy. And it just, well, it makes me mad when they start, "We're gonna have to cut education, we're gonna have to cut..." What they're actually doing is cutting the rate of increase. And as far as some of these programs, federal government needs to, if they would just look in-house at how many departments they have created that are doing the same thing, and look at some consolidation. It's, services should not have to be committed, be reduced or restricted. It should be a matter of what we'd call just plain old business. Clean up the house a little bit and don't waste money. But I'll shut up.
Well, I think a point to reemphasize is just what you said. I mean, it's stark to me when you say sequestration. All you're really talking about is the eighty-nine billion dollars. It's cutting the rate of growth of the federal government. It's already growing. And a comment that I saw on a YouTube video by an individual, the national debt, if you will, has gone up seventeen trillion dollars. And if you started counting right this minute to reach seventeen trillion dollars, you start one, two- this minute to reach seventeen trillion dollars, you start one, two, three, so forth, it'd take you over five thousand years to count to seventeen trillion. That shows you the magnitude, not only of the counting, but how long it would take you to count it, but the magnitude of the federal deficit. So this sequestration amount is just a nadsai compared to what the debt is, and both the House and the Senate and the president have got to do some things that, it's kind of comparative with what the county is gonna have to do, or the state is gonna have to do, we're facing, facing a budget crisis in the country, and the Congress has to have courage to face the budget crisis and quit spending the taxpayers' money unwisely. That's where we are. Any other comments?
Just plain old country arithmetic. My daddy raised me, taught me, and when I looked down and around this room, everybody in this room was raised similar, it's not bad to go in debt, but always know how you'll get out. And the problem is, people in Raleigh and people in Washington forgot that lesson, I think they were probably taught that once upon a time, but they forgot to put it in practice now.
Any other comments? The consent agenda is where we are. Any questions on the consent agenda, which is tax release request for January, which is three thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents, and tax refunds of two thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents, and February twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, call meeting minutes. Any questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I must, I must?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I need to move, we need to have a closed session, sir.
Yes, and I'm gonna read the?
Okay.
You got a motion?
Can adjourn.
To adjourn.
Yeah, but I'm gonna go to?
You got a motion on the phone?
I'm gonna go back and read to adjourn to closed session. The closed session is North Carolina General Statutes one, four, three, dash, three, dot, eleven, one, dash, two, dot, four, excuse me, dash, four, dash, five, and six, prevent disclosure of confidential information, degrees, prizes, or awards, economic development, contractual, and personnel. This is included in the motion to adjourn. Again, we had a, a motion, do we have a second to the motion to adjourn?
I second it.
So all in favor, raise your right hand to adjourn to closed session.
Okay.
We stand adjourned, closed session.